This is the Bluff Town Council Work Session. Today is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Brad Hornsby.
Luann Hook.
Jennifer Davila.
Anne Lepin.
Erin Nelson, serving as Town Manager.
So the first thing on the agenda is a review of the 20, excuse me, the 2024 fiscal year amended budget. And I'm going to turn this over to Erin to talk about any changes that are on it.
Yeah, I can share my screen if that would be helpful for folks.
That would be.
Okay, great. Let me go ahead. And I do still need to make the changes in the actual Excel document, which then, as a reminder, will this, the amended, will also go on the 2025 because we've got to have, you know, multiple years of data there. But I just wanted to mention, I know we had discussed a few things in our last meeting. So I've highlighted a couple of things and then I just had a couple of questions. What would be the easiest way? Should I, should I go over the highlights and then pause for questions? That work for everyone?
I, I think that works best.
Okay, so it's gonna scroll here for a second. I tried to highlight. I hope it highlighted one here. Oh, it looks like my highlights are gone. Darn. Okay. Let me just make sure I have the most. Did yours have highlights when you opened them?
Mine did on the 25, but I didn't see any on the 24.
Not on the 24. Oh, shoot. Well, that's not super helpful. Okay, in that case, I guess I wanted to, so after I take a look at Linda's financials for May, I will update the revenues. I don't expect tax revenues to change significantly. However, if we saw, you know, really big increases in the money we received in May and is two, two months delayed, then we would up to the amended projected total revenues. So that, that is pending. And I'm just gonna go ahead. There's someone on, on the phone. I'm just gonna mute them and if they need to speak, they can star six. Okay, um, so that's what's going on with revenues. If we saw any big swings, I don't expect there to be folks into the meeting. Okay. Then moving down, one of the questions that I did have was regarding the roads budget. I know Michael Havikin had requested, oh, here it is. I don't know why it wasn't. There we go. I, I know that he had requested $10,000 potentially for professional services. Did we still think that should be in this budget just in case or does that need to move to next year? It's open either way.
So, and actually, my copy of 2024 is highlighted. And I made a note to myself on that. I'm talking with Michael later today about that. My understanding was that he had received two or three different bids from engineering firms.
Oh, great.
Yesterday, his question to me was, what is the council's decision? I want to clarify with him because I'm not sure what he means. I thought that what we had decided was yes, go ahead and, and secure those services and that that was going to be something he was working on. So I'll clarify with him. But I would say leave it in there because he has to make contact with two or three different engineering firms.
Excellent. Okay, so that was one. And I don't think that there were a whole lot of additional changes. If we wanted to go, and I mean, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we have to spend it this fiscal year. There have, of course, been a couple delays with hiring of the project manager and we can get into that, of course. So I, I have these highlighted as, you know, I don't know if we're gonna draw down any of these funds. I would expect at this point UDB will be unable to draw down any funds from the EPA grant, given that they are not registered in SAM.gov. So I don't think it's a bad thing. It's in our budget. We just, you know, realistically, we probably won't spend it. So, you know, we can leave it in there, but I did want to call attention to that, that that probably will just get moved over into next year. The only other thing, I suppose, to highlight in, in the last couple meetings, and I, I apologize, I don't, I did, I did, I don't think I highlighted this one. But we talked about getting a, a computer for both the clerk, a replacement of the clerk's computer as well as a computer for the project manager. And I will, I apologize. I don't, I don't have this ready. It's been kind of a week. But that, I do want to have that in the month of June. I think it is reasonable to expect that that purchase will take place in June and not necessarily in July. So it's gonna be an align item under admin. And I, I think it's already reflected in there, but I will triple check my numbers to make sure it's in there. Yes, Luann?
I'm just wondering about that timing wise, since we don't have either of those positions hired, if, if you'll actually get it.
Yeah, I, I'd really like to have the computer before the project manager even comes on board. I, I don't want to have them, you know, in for the first day or even, you know, first week and not have a computer, since there are so many documents that they'll need to go through. So I do want to have that ready for him. I would say in the budget this year, or we have the money this year i- in the budget. So I, I think that's appropriate. And then for Kathy's computer, it's the, the one and number two. And it's just a really dated machine that the sooner I will feel better, the sooner we move that over, just because it is so dated. I think it is kind of getting to the point that it's the potential we could lose documents. And I am trying to back stuff up on the external hard drive, or I should, Kathy is, thank you Kathy. But it, it definitely needs to be replaced. So, you know, if, if, if it is something that we can get done this year, I think it would be best.
Yeah, I, I think we absolutely have to replace Kathy's. We inherited that from the BSA, so it's over, it's more than six years old. It's probably closer to eight or nine. And in addition to just being overloaded, it's slow, like, yes, very slow. So it's more time consuming. And then on the project manager, I, I would agree with Erin. I think we, let's just get both of these now and, and be ready and be super hopeful that we get somebody hired in the month of June and that we're not waiting till July.
And it's just kind of like an asterisk to this entire conversation. I still have had my ears out for like another IT service provider because I know NetForce is relatively pricey for the services that they're offering. So what we have slated for IT, I think, is reasonable, but there's the potential that we could reduce that in next year's budget for the total overall spend on IT services. I think, you know, it would be fine to have NetForce get these two new computers online and working and we could still move over to another IT service provider, which I would still like to do, given there are some additional requirements by the end of December. We have to switch to like a .gov domain and all these other little things. But just a, just a note on that, and IT in general is something that I really need to lock down on and get, get working, so.
Erin, we also talked in a meeting about you taking the, the brand new computer and downgrading yours to the project manager to pass out to the job site and whatnot. Did you think any more about that?
You know, I think I'm okay with my current machine, knowing that we are gonna need to schedule all computers to be, all of our current computers to be upgraded in 2026 fiscal year, 2026. So like next summer, I'm okay with where I currently sit. But thanks for looking out for me. I appreciate it.
Does anybody else have a question on the 2024 amended? While we're talking about this, Erin and I talked yesterday. Our next scheduled meeting is a work session, which is the 11th of June. Because the budgets are due by the 22nd of June, I would really do this and finalize everything on the 11th, which means that I would throw on a very brief meeting to vote and approve the 2024 amended and the 2025 budgets. So between now and the 11th, if you see something or you have a question, please talk to Erin or myself so that we can get it fixed and be ready to, to vote on the 11th. I'm gonna be traveling on the 18th. And I don't want to let this go to the 18th because that only gives us a wiggle room of four days if we have something that we have to fix. So if everyone's okay with that, I'll just throw on like a 10-minute business meeting on the work session at four, at four o'clock next Tuesday. Does anyone have a problem with that? And, and quite honestly, the budgets have taken so much time. It would be nice to move this off the, the agenda and be done with it. So, all right, then going to the 2025, Erin, do you want to take that on?
Yes, so a couple questions for council. Let me share my screen again. All right, so this one hopefully did have all the highlights. And so revenue is not really making any changes there. I believe we had talked about, I think, this year's fundraiser, assuming there's a fundraiser in September. It sounds like it's supposed to be going to EMS. And so I just wanted to confirm if we should include those monies coming in and out of our account or if EMS is able to take those directly. Yeah, I don't know if anyone had, had an answer for that one.
I don't think we can give it to EMS directly. That was the problem two years ago. It has to pass through us. I will confirm that.
Probably just to move it along, I will include money here. And the worst thing that happens is it gets scrapped on the in and out on revenues and expenses. I have line 3990 highlighted, so this is the number that is moving over from prior year surpluses, essentially. I do expect this increase after some additional discussions today, but I just wanted to let you know this is the number. The higher this number gets means the more money that we're drawing down from prior years. So just a heads up there. And that's okay. We have been very fiscally conservative up until this point. And there, there are some additional expenses next year to, to deal with. I wanted to highlight that I took money from our previous discussions. I have taken money out of admin buildings and grounds, so that's kind of the BCC and parks and such. And I moved the projected money into noxious weed control. I also did the same for the CCC buildings and grounds. I moved that directly into the noxious weeds. For admin, munidoc, civic plus, all of this stuff. So Anne and Linda and I have been having some discussions I know we'll discuss further on Thursday. I had completely zeroed out this line 4130, sorry, 4153. However, Anne and Linda, are there still, if we're keeping one versus the other, are there any costs associated with this? Or are we getting rid of both?
Well, we are getting rid of the more expensive one. We paid for the part, and I'm not super clear with this. We paid for the munidoc part in, probably in March. It was around 300 something.
Got it. Okay, so, so I'll make sure that that's reflected. I'll, I'll have to double check what's on 2024. But then we're, we're assuming that we'll continue to use that service next year, so it'll be another nominal, nominal, non? It's been a hard week, guys. Small amount for 2025, 400 bucks or so. Yeah, great. Okay, great. I will just make a note on my notebook. Add 400. Thanks for your patience with me. So this is the increase in weed control here. And then, okay, so moving on, and this maybe kind of combines a little bit of the next couple agenda items. But, so I had additionally put in $10,000 for the fire department for next year. However, we did get a pretty detailed list of requests from the fire chief regarding how they would use up to $25,000 for next year. $15,000 of it would be for a device that's used. It's not a Jaws of Life piece of equipment, but it's very similar and it, my understanding is it's really kind of what's, what's needed. Many of the incidents they respond to are car accidents, and so it, it would be a very worthwhile piece of equipment. And then they're also requesting funding for additional turnouts. I'm not sure how many folks they currently have on their roster right now. I know they did purchase some turnouts last year, but certainly we want to make sure that everyone is protected. And so if they're requesting money for that, what Anthony said is they could spend anywhere between, what Chief Lot said is they could spend anywhere between, you know, 21 to 25. But they certainly have a need of up to 25,000 for this next year solely for equipment. And so, you know, clearly this is a really important service. I definitely encourage the fire department, potentially in unison with us, to apply for some grants. I think there, there might be some grants that are available to them, you know, in general. But knowing that this is such an important service, what, what is the council's inclination towards increasing this to the full ask amount? Or how do we want to, how do we want to handle that?
Luann?
Yeah, I am glad that they got all that stuff last year, the turnouts and whatnot. The $15,000 piece for the, the Jaws is just like you were saying, Erin, it's something that they use quite a bit. They do have to depend on the generator and whatnot, and that's, can be frustrating and, you know, it's a, a small engine, so on. So if, I would think that we ought to bump it to 15,000. And then it can always be amended if they get additional firefighters and need additional equipment. We could look at it again and later and amend it later.
Any other thoughts on that? I would agree with Luann. I think the, the 15 and then as we're working through the fiscal year, see where we're at and what they need. I mean, certainly, we want them to have everything that they need, but let's take a look at maybe some grant writing and what the actual need is.
That sounds good to me too, unless we have firefighters who don't have turnouts and then obviously, but we need to get them suited up. But if they don't have anybody for the new turnouts yet, then that seems to make sense to me as well.
Well, and it's still funded by the county is the idea too, so. If we can do some county grants or, or whatever, whatever it takes, I think we gotta all work together on it.
So it sounds like no one's objecting to moving that up to 15 with subject to review during the fiscal year.
Excellent. Okay, I also have EMS highlighted because this would be the money going out expended from the, from the fundraiser. So I'll just make that equal to the, the money, projected money. And I usually do about $3,000. Usually we get a little bit more than that, but we'll do 3,000. And then moving down, CC grounds maintenance, I've reduced some of this because of the noxious weed was already included. So it just, it just moved around in the budget. So then, Bob, community promotion. This was another area that we, it's definitely an agenda item, so I don't know if we want to discuss that now or, or wait until later. But they had, Ms. Diana Davidson had presented a nice deck as to what they would use some of the funding for. And I just, and do you want to discuss that now or later?
Well, I think we can just do it now, since it's the next item anyway, and we've talked about the fire department.
Okay.
So one of the things that I had talked to Diana Davidson about was, given some of the costs that we have with litigation, that I felt, I personally felt like right now going more than 5,000 in the budget was, was something I wasn't comfortable with doing. I think revisiting it as we go and we see what the next, what the first three or four or five months of the 2025 budget look like, we can always produce more funds for them. But right now, just me personally, I think going from three to 5,000 is reasonable. But I'm certainly only one of us, so other thoughts?
I like the bumping it to 5,000. I think that's a, a good request and a good amount.
Yeah, I feel like it, it gives them the ability to do some of the more stuff that they wanted to do without going for those big ticket items just yet.
I agree. I had a talk with Elaine Isler and about marketing. And the, the focus of economic development in the city is bluff. They put a lot of their time and energy into focusing on bluff because we have excellent restaurants, excellent motels and scenery, the hiking and everything else. So I think bumping it to five is good and the county is, is definitely supporting us.
Just going over the à la carte list that Diana presented with us, I agree that the bumping to five is a good place to start. There are big you know, if we, at some point in time, if we could go, could get them a little bit more to go with the retargeting, that would be very helpful. I, I think that in our last conversations, we probably weren't in a spot to go to the Go West Trade Show right now just because we're still kind of iffy on our whole product. So that was a big, you know, that was a big spend with that. And I'm, so, so I think, I think, you know, if, if we could do five, maybe six, that would be great. But, but I'm comfortable with five as well.
And Erin and I have had a way too many conversations about what the next fiscal year looks like in terms of having to do amended budgets. And so far, we've managed to avoid having to do amended budgets until the end of the fiscal year. But with the grants that are coming in and the expenditures, we're definitely going to be doing revisiting as, as the needs come up, both with the fire department and with the business owners of Bluff. I think those are things we can always revisit. So I think, Erin, we've got a consensus to do five and, and keep looking at it.
That sounds great. Okay. Past that, I haven't made any other updates. Again, this is our special revenue fund for the CCC building and really haven't made any changes since that was originated. So any additional thoughts, questions, concerns, things folks want to see? These numbers are gonna, numbers are gonna change just slightly based on our conversation today. But I would not expect us, I would be shocked if it exceeded 600,000 for next year. But I will get an update to you all as soon as possible. And I will also get an update over to Dave Sanderson, our accountant, so he can do, you know, a, a final pass. He did, he doesn't typically get quite like in the weeds like we do, but certainly his input's always appreciated.
Luann, did you have a question or?
Yeah, I do. I just, we also talked about the, the, we created the playground committee and they've been working on playground, either the community center or the, the new old school, the new old school. They're not in here. It looks like Parks Equipment, Supplies and Maintenance is, is 500.
Yeah, I didn't, did not have anything for a playground this year.
Parks Rec Programs, Community Events is, is at zero. I just wonder if, if it goes here or if it goes into the capital improvements fund. It seems like it should be a category somewhere to it in the, the year and have to forward it on to the next year or whether they can use it for a match of some sort for applying for the grants or get one-piece equipment started or make the plan or something. It just seems like it ought to be on since they've been working on it. But I don't know if it goes on this budget line item, like these other things, like the fire and the, the Bob things.
So I've been going back and forth with Jocelyn Meyer about this. One of the reasons it's not in this 2025 budget is that in order for the playground committee to move forward and apply for grants, they have to be able to specify where that playground is going to be. So next Tuesday, Jocelyn will be presenting to the DRC, to the Design Review Committee, what they would like to see and can we designate a specific spot so they can start working on it. They can't do anything until they have a location. And so the choices would be, does the DRC committee recommend to their entities putting a playground at the CCC? Or do we want to put the playground at the Bluff Community Center? And one of the big drawbacks is we don't know what the construction's going to look like at the CCC. And I think it would be probably premature. To do it at the CCC, it would be an option, but it's something we have to run through the Design Review Committee first.
But what about the, the ideas of putting it up at the community center to add to the fire kitchen in the community center when people are there and townspeople and renters and events?
Then we would need to go ahead and take, you know, make that decision that it's okay to, to use that spot and then they could move forward with grants.
So shouldn't it be on the, the list here of something that we're working on?
Wouldn't that be under capital improvements?
So it would come under both. I, I think the biggest thing I've really struggled with, and same for a lot of capital projects, is I don't have any estimates. No one's provided any financial ideas as to how much this is gonna cost. So we definitely could mark it as a capital project. Do we, the, the next question then is how much and do we think it's gonna happen in the next fiscal year?
Well, so if we put it in the, in the 4525, Parks Equipment, Supplies and Maintenance, is the, the little one that's right there by the community center is getting pretty dilapidated. But if it was in that category and, and we put 5,000, it's not gonna buy a whole entire playground. But it would be seed money and it would be a line item that says, yeah, we're committed to, to making a an area for the young families in town and for the people that do come and use the community center. And then if it doesn't happen in this year, then it, it rolls over.
Yeah, so I can.
We need to amend it. And if they find something that'll work and looks like a go, then we could amend it and put more in there, match a grant that they find or something.
I can definitely take money. So I will say for our meeting this afternoon, I don't know if, and I apologize, Anne, I should have communicated this. I don't know if our capital projects plan is gonna be ready to vote upon because I am still missing some numbers. But I think it would make sense that we could say that, you know, we're earmarking $5,000 out of capital improvements. It can go on the budget for the year. We'll see an increase in revenues from capital. And then it could, it could come out here and then probably Linda will work with you to create a new line item. So it's a, it's a specific thing because I know I think more equipment and supply is more like, you know, I don't know, fixing up a picnic table or something like that as opposed to a large equipment purchase. So we can do a, a new line item for that, if, if that's what we agree on.
So I'm gonna sound really curmudgeonly and I'm sorry. The school is done, the elementary school is open, the playground is open to the public and it has equipment. And right now, I don't, I personally am nervous about our next fiscal year. And I would prefer to not have a line item and, and see if they're able to come up with some grants or some matching grants and then we amend. I can live with 5,000, but I just want to throw out right now in, in I can live with 5,000, but I just want to throw out right now and in a, for this size of a community, we do have a playground that's up to date to use. And I know I sound old and curmudgeonly, but in balancing the priorities right now with the fiscal year and the litigation costs, I am really edgy. So I'll just throw that out for your consideration. And we can, we can put the 5,000 in. I'm, I'm not going to have a, a big fit over to that. But I just want all of us to be aware that we're incurring some pretty hefty charges right now with litigation.
I just want to throw out that I think that 5,000 is probably not even close to being remotely efficient for a matching type grant. Playground equipment is very, very, very expensive. 21 years ago, when we put in the piece of playground equipment that we did put in, it was a $10,000 to $15,000 piece of equipment. And that's, that price has only gone up. So I would, I would say that if we're going to do it, that maybe it's worth waiting for and doing it realistically rather than, you know, saying, well, we've allocated $5,000, which, you know, is, is going to give us something, but probably not realistically a, a piece of equipment. That's my thoughts. I, I have looked at the pricing guides and, and do know that they are very, very, very expensive. And then there's a lot of stuff that goes along with it too, like, you know, upgrading your, your ground base and things like that. That's going to add cost to it as well. So I, I would like to see what we can pull out for grant money and see if we need to do some kind of match. So if we need to have, if the 5,000 in the budget for this year helps us come up with a matching fund or something, then that's great. But I, I don't think that, you know, I don't think the 5,000 is going to, I don't think it's going to touch a piece of equipment.
I wonder if instead we can just go ahead and make sure that it's on the capital projects plan. We can put a realistic number in there. It sounds like, you know, tens of thousands probably. And similar to many of the other projects, we can say, hey, we know the entire cost is going to be XYZ. We think the town over the next five years might spend up to insert our chosen dollar amount. And then that way we know that we're planning for it, but we don't have the entire item in next fiscal year.
So I think Luann had her hand up first. Go ahead.
I was going to offer it to Britt since he hadn't spoken yet. Do you want to go first, Britt?
Yeah, sure. So yeah, I, I like it being in the, the capital improvements plan. That seems to, I mean, that, that expresses intent there while there's still so much in the air. I do agree with Anne that there are options for families in town right now. But you know, when, when I, when I think about the playground at the, the community center, I don't even think about that as like for local families. Like it's like more of an event playground. So I think that that needs to be updated soon, you know, regardless of, of whatever, you know, whatever else. It, I mean, we've all been over there during the balloon fest, during arts fest, during the films. And it is just dark chaos going on over there. So it would be great to have for visitors and events that the community center will come up regardless of what the rest of the, the committees and stuff are working on too, I guess I would say. So I like it being in the, the fiscal plan, but not in this, this budget.
Luann?
Yeah, so that'd be great if we could at least add it to the capital improvements plan. But I also see it as a, as an effort to encourage the committee that yes, we do want to see things. The school, if you were just driving by and you saw that big fence around it, I don't think you're going to stop and try all the locks and feel comfortable going in, feel like you'll get kicked out kind of thing during school time. You can't use it. It's, it's not, I mean, it's there if you kind of know about it. But the other thing is, is with a certain amount, you could do it in stages. You could make that area a, a sand pit, say, or, you know, there's a lot of cool music things. There's things that don't require you to be 10 feet off the ground and falling onto hard surfaces. That could be a starter to it. So I would just like to see it in the budget to encourage them to keep, keep working this year. And if they get grants, great. And we can put that much in or do a portion of the cost or something. So. Thanks.
Well, I've had at least three meetings, one-on-one with different playground equipment people. And I can say quite honestly, we're looking at several hundred thousand dollars of equipment. If you were to do even a moderate upgrade. And I, I agree, it's not ideal to use the, the elementary school. It is a, you know, having that fence there is kind of like a jail. And, and I get that. But I'm just trying to do that balance of where we are economically. We're, we're sitting fine. We have a nice chunk of money in the bank. But I'm also nervous. So I don't care where, where we put it. I think we should recognize that a playground update would be great. But I'm just really edgy about thinking that we're going to spend, that we're going to commit to a, a large amount of money at this point. But that's why Jocelyn's going to be presenting. So we get a little better idea at the DRC and then I can bring it back. Jen and, and I can just bring it back to everybody. So anything else on the 2025? Okay. Now, if we move to number three, discussion of the business owners of bluff and the fire department's budget request. Does anyone have anything that they want to talk about that we haven't talked about during the budgets on, on that topic? Do, it is like 11:08. Do we want to push through or do we want to take a five minute break?
I'm for pushing, but it's up to y'all.
Can I just pause the recorder quickly?
Yeah, I'd say, why don't you give us five minutes and I can check on a couple of things and be back in five minutes.
Okay, I'm just going to mute myself, but just leave the computer up. It is 11:09. It's 11:15. Who are, we're missing? Linda? I think that's it. Linda, are you on now?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I seem to be frozen, but if you can hear me.
Yes, we can, we can hear you. So it's 11:16 a.m. We're back in our meeting. And we're on number four, discussion of environmental justice, government-to-government grant, project manager, a note taker and bookkeeper positions. And Erin, do you want to pick that up?
Sure. So I'm, are the, the individual that we extended a job offer to for the project manager position did decline. So I am going to repost that. It's going to be up on our website. And then doing a pretty broad reach, trying to maybe even go out further than what we did last time. I am going to just post it as open until position filled. And, you know, knowing that we might need to be more flexible with more of like a hybrid work situation. I definitely encourage anyone listening or any council members, you know, if they have someone who they think this might be a good, a good fit for, to, to please pass it around. And then, you know, as we get applications, we'll conduct interviews if the person, you know, seems, seems qualified on paper. Yeah, it's unfortunate. This is going to set us back just, just a little bit. However, we have a DRC meeting today at two. And we're going to discuss, you know, how we can continue to generate RFPs for, for some of the big work, including like the architectural services to, you know, not, not have, you know, stuff completely stalled. We do now have access to the EPA funding. So I will get us set up on the ASAP system where we request electronic transfers. So we, we can draw down when, when needed. But yeah, so just if anyone knows anyone, that project manager job description hasn't changed with the exception of just saying that open until filled. Any questions about that one?
And Erin, just, just to be clear, when we initially posted it, we kind of encouraged people not to specifically reach out to individuals. And this has kind of changed since we only had two applicants to begin with. It's totally appropriate to reach out. I would just caution all of us, myself included, to, you know, not make any promises, but encourage people to put applications in so that they can be reviewed and, and then hopefully interviewed. But it would be nice to get this person in, in June so that we can start the project.
All right. And do you want me to speak to the other position as well or do you want to take that one?
No, I, I want you to go ahead and do it.
Okay. Um, for the sake of not having a bunch of little positions that maybe only have like an hour or two of time, we floated the idea of having the note taker and bookkeeper as the same position. And that way that individual would be closer, probably closer to, I'm going to say anywhere between 20 and 30 hours a week potentially. You know, I know it takes a lot of time to get the notes, notes cleaned up. We would also be hired, so it wouldn't just be our meetings, but planning and zoning meetings as well. That note taker would kind of cover, cover all the meetings that we need to report on, which would be great to have, you know, the same person across everything. And then for the bookkeeper portion of it, you know, certainly someone who's familiar with accounting would be fantastic. But I think that we do have the ability to train the right person. So I really want to make that clear that, you know, yes, we're looking for, you know, kind of this, this dual position. But we can definitely train on, on aspects of the role if someone doesn't necessarily have experience. We have Dave Sanderson, who does a great job. I know Linda will still be very involved in the process as everything is transitioning. And, you know, in the, in the, at 30,000 feet, yes, we, we have a lot going on. There's going to be even more with the grants. But, you know, with the help of Dave and Linda and Plorus, we certainly can train the right person for that role. Also saying that this is going to be kind of a flexible position in terms of, you know, hours. Certainly, you know, there are deadlines that are going to be, need to be hit. And of course, this individual would need to pretty much attend almost all of our meetings. So, but outside of those council meetings and planning and zoning meetings, a lot of the work can be done around their schedule, especially, you know, for, for bookkeeping and stuff. So if, again, someone is interested who's listening, or if you all know someone who might be a good fit, the job description will be posted on our website. Both of them are going to be up on our website. I'll kind of make it the top, top heading when you go to our homepage. And same for this one. I, I don't want to rush us into the wrong candidates. We'll keep this one open until filled. So there's no, no application deadline. However, we do, would really like to get this person in. And starting with the like end of year fiscal year, beginning of year fiscal year stuff, it's good to see everything going on. And then as we'll talk about in the meeting tonight, we'll be going through an audit again. So it would be great to have that person on with Linda as we're, we're going through that audit. with Linda as we're, we're going through that audit for this year. For this particular kind of hybrid position, I think that it's important that we keep an open mind regarding the hourly wage. You know, certainly I would say that we would pay based on experience. And then I think, you know, given our, our ask, it would be appropriate to also have, you know, a certain number of hours or days allocated for like paid time off as well, since this is a pretty, you know, it, it's an administrative job and I, I don't think we need the person in. Yeah, I, I think that there, you know, are some, some minor benefits that we can offer to make it an attractive position, including as I said, that, you know, a little bit more flexible schedule with the exception of, of the note taking piece. So I don't know if y'all had a chance to look over those, that particular job description, if you had questions or, you know, wanted to add anything else. You know, certainly I, I would think that, you know, the person would be in office and Anne and I are talking about how to accommodate that with our current layout. But it definitely is a needed position for us as we continue to expand the organization. So very excited to get an individual on boarded. And hopefully we can find the right fit.
Who am?
Yeah, my apologies. I did not see that in the packet. If I missed it, I'm sorry. But my question is, are you hoping to combine those two jobs as one person so that they come to all the meetings? I mean, that, that's kind of the ideal.
Oh, I'm, I apologize. I think I put it in the regular meeting packet, not this one. But yeah.
I thought I saw it combined, then I couldn't, okay. But I'm just, that's sort of the ideal world. Is that the person who's doing the accounting would also show up at all the meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm thinking that might be a little bit tough to find.
Part of the rationale for trying to toss it out that way, Lou, is that it gets to be more and more burdensome for the person doing the bookkeeping with all these multitude of part-time people. And so if we can consolidate some of these positions, and it might be that we can't, I mean, it might be that that just isn't possible. But I have done a fair amount of reaching out on the bookkeeper piece alone, and I have hit a dead end on every reach out. And so I'm, I don't know if it's a number of hours or that it's just not that attractive, or there's no one with the skill set. But, you know, if we have to break it up, we can, we could certainly do that. The preference would be to try to get as close to at least a halftime or ideally put enough stuff on somebody that they're a full-time employee. You know, we've talked, Erin and I have been kind of talking through the things with the project manager, the note taker, the bookkeeper, the community center, the clerk position, trying to look at how we can configure things so that we don't end up with 12 part-time employees. That really does increase the bookkeeping aspect of it. So, but anybody that would like to apply, we're certainly open to looking at what the skill set is and what, you know, what we can do to create or eliminate, I guess, some of the divisions. Maybe Sophie would like to move to off.
Well, that's the other thing, like the accounting can be done virtually, I would think. And the meetings for the most part can be done virtually. So I don't know that you really need to have somebody standing right here. Might open it up to more people because if they can log on to every meeting, they can take notes. They can YouTube it, take notes. The accounting can be virtual meetings, Zoom meetings and stuff, I would think. But anyway.
Part of the problem is you can kind of see what we've got right now. We had to go virtual for many reasons, but one of them is availability of Craig to do YouTube. You know, and that, that's another piece that we were going to need to figure out. We need to have a backup. Craig does a great job, but he's, you know, he has other jobs. And we don't have a real solid backup on that. And so the note taker in an ideal world would be at least able to be present or be in virtually. And the bookkeeper, I reached out to Dave Sanderson, our accountant. I reached out to a couple of people that have done accounting for the county and for Blanding. And they gave me great suggestions, but nobody could come up with the name, just like where to post. Well, yeah. Jen?
When we're looking for a bookkeeper, we're looking for somebody in my mind who, you know, checks the mail, right, cuts the checks, you know, writes the checks, enters that kind of stuff into Polaris, I'm assuming. I would say QuickBooks, but we don't use QuickBooks, right? We use Polaris. So, you know, I mean, that isn't necessarily anybody who has to have an accountant type degree. But I do think it's somebody who needs to be able to come into Bluff and do some things physically rather than just doing everything online. Maybe, maybe, maybe Linda's still willing to do all of that runaround, but, but I know that she spends a good amount of her day just, just running around and doing stuff. So I would hope that maybe having that position filled would free her up to do some other things. So I would think it has to be somebody at least kind of local.
Yeah, and I, go ahead.
So part of this is because I need to transition out anyway. You know, I've got a year and a half. So what, getting someone, getting them started, and there are a ton of things that you have to do here. You can't do an audit virtually. You can't make copies and file and do all those things virtually. Polaris will train someone though. So we can send someone, someone up to Polaris and they will train them to do probably even more than what I do.
Yeah, that, that's a good point about Polaris is that's probably the, the best use of our money that we had when we started was getting Polaris on board. But again, I just would hate to see us do like three more part-time hires if we can put some stuff together and have more of a, a job. The, the other piece that Erin alluded to, that Erin and I have been talking about, the project manager piece, and then adding another part timer, another two part times. We're, we're running out of office space where we are. I mean, we're, we're already sharing an office, Kathy and myself. And I, granted, I rarely go in. But if we have a project manager, that project manager for the EPA grant is going to have to have their own space, like a bulk space to be able to spread out plans and, and contracts and that kind of stuff. So sharing's not going to be ideal. And then if we add a, a bookkeeper and Linda's training them, sorry Linda, you've got a cute little spot in there, but it's tiny, you know, and, and having two people in a workspace. So, you know, it's really a matter of just get the word out, see if we can find someone or someone's willing to train and, and do these. But I think the number one skill set is really being able to use a computer and being familiar with programs. That's just kind of my thought. So any questions on that? Or if you review the, the descriptions and want to add anything or talk to Erin, she, she did the great job of writing them. So anything else on that? All right, then we'll move to the environmental concerns at Six West. The email from Mary Gillum detailed the erosion concerns on Six West. And then about an hour before our meeting, she sent some photos. And I did forward those to everyone when I got them, but they weren't in the package. And so questions, thoughts on what, if anything, the town should be doing?
I would like to just put a map up of what we're talking about. If, if I could share my screen. I will try.
Sure.
I think I'm ready to do that. Let me see if I can get it up. Well, this might not be. Okay, that's, well, let's see. Just a second here. Let me see if I can get this up another way. Thought I had it where I could do it. Just one second. This technology part is always the hardest, isn't it? Let me try one more time, just a second. So when I do.
I think we lost her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, there she is. Okay.
Well, let me try one more time. If you want to carry on, if anybody has any, let's see.
So in looking at these pictures, I am just wondering, is this erosion due to a cut that was made for the trail? Or is, I mean, I've, I've grown up along these banks and have watched them come and go for the last 40 years, you know, and erosion happens. I'm wondering if it's specifically cut because there was a cut for the trail put in, or if it's just something that's happening as, as it does. I mean, my road in particular washes and erodes at least twice a year. And we go in and we have to fix it. That's, that's just part of living here. We get strong storms that come through and, and we don't, you know, we have not sharp sand bases that we all build on top of. And while it's frustrating, I'm just questioning is if, if the erosion is specifically caused because of the trail or if it's just happening.
I would have no idea. I'm just looking at the pictures now.
So I'll go ahead and share this, although it's not ideal. Let me see if I can zoom. Oh wait, maybe that's. Where's my zoom file, my zoom part?
Can you double click on the map itself and get it out of your email?
Well, that's what I was trying to do and it doesn't, it doesn't want to do that. So anyway.
So maybe the question is, does anyone on the council not know what we're talking, where we're talking about? It's maybe not so important on the map as.
Man, I know, I know where we're talking about. I'm not certain of some of these boundary lines they're talking about, like between town and stuff like that. So I'm, I'm just a little bit confused. I feel like I'm walking into traffic in this conversation as well, you know, so.
Well, that's what I was going to show you. I guess if I can just describe it, since I, I can do it fine on Google meets, but on this one, it's got a little different system that worked fine earlier when I practiced it. But anyway, now I've lost the train of how I get there. But the, yeah, you need to see it. Anyway, six comes down to Larkspur, six ends at Larkspur and turns into an alley, goes to the alley. I think I'm just going to have to share it with my, let's see.
Okay, so it turns into an alley at Larkspur.
Yeah, it turns into Lark, yeah. And then it goes on down to what's Fourth South Alley.
Can you email us that file and we could open it on our computer?
Yeah.
Let's see, maybe so.
Well, the, the question I have is, does it matter whether it's an alley or a road at this point?
Well, what matters is that the, the alley ends at Fourth South Alley. And then at some point in time, the county gave away the alley at the end. So the point that they're talking about is 20 feet south of the actual deeded property. So it's, there's 20 feet further south that they're trying to, that they claim because the county gave it to them. And so if you come back 20 feet, there's no erosion problem at all. And there's no erosion is the other thing. That, that, like Jen was saying, this stuff happens. You're on sand, you're on dirt. There's nothing going anywhere. The alley is not completed to the end. It was off, you might, you surely recall from a, a prior meeting when the owner, a private property owner, which I say I am part of that owner. We own a budding property to this alley and to the corner. So I'll dig that as a thing. But the, the alley comes down and stops before the end of the town property. So private property access is, is blocked there. And there was an offer to finish the alley to the end of the town property on private expense, but it was rejected. So it does not come to town property. And then that alley that the county gave away is 20 feet that goes off into there. So that's also an undetermined. You know, instead of going that route of getting that alley back into public property, it was easier to just reroute the trail around the end there and, and save all that hassle for now.
Okay, so that, what I'm hearing you say to cut to the chase is that this erosion is not on town property?
The top is, yeah. The top is on, on property. But like I say, it's one rain or one windstorm. You can have your air in town. And, and if you want to look at erosion, I'd like, maybe Mary is, she's a geologist. She could figure that erosion is coming from on that pond road. That's, that's erosion.
Yeah, well, let's stick with this and not detour onto the, the pond. So you're saying that part of this is on, part of the erosion is on town property?
Well, I haven't seen what her pictures are, but yeah, that's, that's part of the problem is that it just comes to the, the end of the alley is, is sort of disintegrates into their corner. So the corner that, that she's concerned about is the corner of the South Alley, not of the original deeded private property. But if you go to that point, you're on town property. And then you hit like our property and Guyman's and so on. So that, that's what's not finished. And at this point, it would take an engineer to figure out how to, to do that. Needs to be in the roads department and figure out how to finish that alley. And that would save, that would give them their access that they want into their gate. It would give our access, it'd give the trail easement access. But the erosion isn't the problem. There isn't enough erosion to worry anybody.
So it sounds to me like the best next step is to talk, have a meeting with the roads department because Michael Havakina is trying to secure engineering services to take a look at some of the issues with roads. So none of us are engineers. None of us are equipped, I would say, I'm not equipped, to make a determination. This is probably more of an engineering question. And being sure that we're talking about town property and not private property.
Yeah, the, the stakes are all there. And it's, it's definitely town property that's not finished to the end of town property, which corners to the corner that they are claiming is theirs.
Okay, so let's do this. If I can make a suggestion, let's table this discussion at this point until the roads department is met and talked about the engineering services and what the next step might be. and what the next step might be for looking at that. Because I would want to be sure before we made any decisions that we actually know what we're talking about. Does that sound reasonable? Table it until we can talk to Michael Havikin about his plan for roads. Okay, hearing no objection, I'm going to move us to the next one, which is the Monument Management Plan. And Britt sent out a document yesterday. Did everybody have a chance to look at that? And now turn this over to Britt.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't give that out to y'all earlier. That's me in comments, sorry about that. Yeah, I tried to just, it's, it's a pretty straightforward for, as far as comments go. It's pretty, I mean, it's only a couple of pages. But I, I was basically trying to highlight some issues that I've heard from folks in town. They're important to folks in town and wanted to make sure I expressed those. Sorry. So I mean, the main thing to take from it is that I have, you know, generally Bluff supports Alternative E throughout the plan. I mean, Alternative E is the preferred alternative that the government is behind with Bear's Ears Commission. And it seems to be, I mean, it, when I, when I read it, it, it fit pretty much everything that I was hoping to get out of a, a national monument for the area. One of the problems that I've heard from folks in town, and I agree to an extent, is that a lot of Alternative E has some can kicking down the road, like with implementation level things or even planning levels, to say that like, oh, the monument plan is active. And in that plan, we need to come up with, we have three years to come up with interpretive plans, recreational plans, down the list. While I know that that's frustrating, I also think that what they're trying to do is really allow for the onboarding of the engagement and trouble, knowledge and leadership into the problem. So I think part of that is that we're trying to build it as they were making this plan. It wouldn't go anywhere really. So I understand their, their hopes of just getting something out and then giving themselves a few years to get the plan completely buttoned up and involved with, with that as well, you know, as we are in town. So. The, one of the main things, so I, I went over just, I broke it down by sections in the document that I thought, this is by no means all the sections in the document. It goes into paleontology, fire field reduction, all kinds of things. I just wanted to highlight a few different sections that we would support and that are going the direction that I think town, town supports. One of the big pushes was to include Sand Island in their list of sites available for development, for visitors, for visitor services. For some reason, that's not in their Alternative E, even though we're actively building stuff down there. And it's already had a ton of construction work down there. And it's a great spot to catch people coming, you know, to this, this southern entrance to the monument. So we pushed for that. And then I also mentioned in here that, that we want to encourage the, encourage the feds to work with us to issue permits for wood cutting and, and things like that. And that we are very interested in being a wood bank and having that, being part of that as well. Let's see, anything else I want to pull up here in particular? Oh, you know, one of the general things I've heard from folks in town is just the protection of Butler Wash objects of importance. So in that, I just kind of broadly said that we, you know, hope in that later planning that, that, that they can protect some of the objects in there. That I think folks are okay with some development if it protects the objects or even getting people to, to, closing the objects down so that people can't go into Alco's and stuff like that would be in keeping with what town would like to see with the pressure we're all seeing in Butler. Anything else I want to tell you guys? Oh, I, you know, I vocalized that we, that Bluff Town would like to see the special recreation permit application process be a little quicker so that if there is a new business in town trying to start a business, they can get an answer on whether or not they even have a permit to operate. That sometimes is taking over a year, you know, for people to even hear back right now. You can't plan a business and out here with that kind of turnaround. So I encourage them to do that. And then I also, I brought up the, one specific thing with town is our involvement with the airport. We, there's only two airports available or stripped available for landing in Bear's Ears Monument, one's at Fry Canyon and then one's in Bluff. And so I basically say, you know, it would be awesome if they worked with the FAA to give us some more, like some more guidance on how to protect Bear's Ears from the air. Because right now, when I asked, I've already told you all this, when I asked them how we can protect like commercial usage and things like that out of our airport, they were basically like, oh, it's the same as if you were, you know, driving a van to the airport, like full of people. It's, it's got the, it's, it's group limit sizes for same as land-based. And as soon as the airplane takes off from the ground, it's no longer, they have no control over what's going on. So that's our own, that's their only throttling point for keeping commercial and stuff like that limited or, you know, that kind of thing. So I, I brought that up, that I would like to see them work with the FAA to come up with something like they do with Park Service. That's even within the county. You know, you've got Needles District of Candylands. That has air restrictions on how low people can fly, that kind of thing. I'd like to see that. And then bring up in that, that while they're limiting takeoff and landings to the two airports, that seems to clearly indicate that they don't want air traffic of that nature in the monument. They don't do anything to address the SITLA parcels, one throughout, but then, then I specifically mentioned just north of town because that's the ones where we're most involved in. But yeah, so that's, that's pretty much it for the things I saw. I think it's a great plan. I think it's pretty flexible, honestly. It still allows hopefully for commercial uses of the land. And I think it'll allow for the restrictions that some folks are support, access, you know, grazing, things like that. I think it allows us to work on that in the future rather than just coming to hammer down and having a big political fallout from it. So you might got any questions for me? Sorry, in my ramble.
Any questions for, for Britt, Lou?
I have one question. I have not gone this 1,200-page document myself.
What?
This is part E. So how many options did they provide you?
So we have.
That's five.
Yeah, we have A through E, with E being their preferred. A's, A basically is no action taken. And then, then they basically give some options, you know, that could be minor, you know, minor differences between things and then their preferred alternative in column E. And essentially, the way, the best way I've heard it described is what we're doing now in this comment period is making F. Like, okay, now if you've heard all of this, here's what we prefer. What parts of this do you like? Do you not like, you know, things like that?
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Jen?
I think it's a good response. My only, my only comment is can we remove the last kind of seems like little snippy line against SITLA?
Sure.
We are in legation with them and trying to convince them that, that we will be good partners and stewards. I think that we shouldn't, shouldn't voice necessarily that opinion.
No problem. As I write, I get more and more snippy as I build documents, so I apologize.
Jen, which one was that?
It's, it's in the last paragraph.
It's in the last paragraph, yeah. It just says, you know, I mean, it's just the comment that SITLA and Utah have proven themselves to be hostile to landscape conservation. And I just think that since we're trying to be, you know, trying to, trying to develop a relationship which we can work with them, I don't think that's an appropriate place for that comment.
Totally. And I, I feel like I've got my, I mean, the more, most important thing I wanted to express, and, and this is in the intro, is that, you know, we were included as long as other municipalities and other governments in Utah. You know, I wanted to make that clear. So I think that's totally fine. Like I said, sorry, I get generally go and I read these documents more and more. I get more stirred up, so.
Well, and you have a lot of state lands besides what's right here that they pulled back out of the Bear's Ears. So, you know, I think your comments on airspace and that sort of thing makes sense because there is a lot of private holding now back in the monument.
Yeah, I like what you wrote. It'll be on the agenda, or it is on the agenda today at four for approval.
Okay, I'll pull that stuff out and then send it back, is that all right?
If everyone's okay with that, it sounds like a consensus. And then we can take a look at it tonight at four.
Cool. Thank y'all.
Well, thanks for waiting through that document and going to the meetings. It's.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Be interesting to see where we go.
It will. Thank y'all for your support, I appreciate it.
All right, is there anything else or shall we adjourn?
I guess I have one more question for you, Britt. What hunting rights and fishing and so on have been topics earlier? What, what are they saying about it?
Hunting, hunting and fishing is pretty much left alone. The only real difference that, that I think is going to ruffle some feathers is no target shooting in the monument is, is one of the big rules. And I think that'll be one, it'll be hard to enforce. There's kind of some questions coming from the communities of being like, by the way, I heard it was like target shooting, do you mean me sighting in my elk, you know, my hunting rifle? Or do you mean target shooting me up in Elk Ridge and, you know, pulling out a 22 and shooting some cans with my family? Is that, you know? And I think a lot of that, like, is going to fall to the way it's enforced, right? Like if, if you are becoming a nuisance in some way, then they'd bust you. But I imagine you might have a law enforcement guy come up if he sees you with your 22 and say hello, but not prevent you from doing it. So with that, you know, my personal belief is that I would like to see, if that's coming in to say shooting ranges, and I would like to see, or sorry to say no target shooting in the monument, then I would like to see all the municipalities have state or federally funded target shooting. I know Blanding has a range, but, and I don't know, that, that's the one we'll see. There's been a lot of ups and downs, back and forth about that one because they don't want to, they don't want to necessarily ruffle a bunch of the Second Amendment kind of folks on this one either. So I could see this one maybe coming out, but.
The natives, the native interest was, was, you know, had a lot of concerns that way too. So, yeah, so thank you.
Hunting's left alone, like they're very, they're very sensitive to, to hunting.
Okay, well, thanks again.
Okay, is there anything else? It's 11:54.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a second?
Oh, second. Sorry, I couldn't find my button. I know, I was muted. Anyway, yeah.
All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? C of four. And it's virtual, it's ballot four, sorry.
Okay, awesome, thank y'all.
Great, thank you, goodbye.